I'd like to call this meeting of the City Council's Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? And do we have a staff report? Mayor Pressing?
Yes, thank you. I would like to talk about the review of the sewer repair policy. And we found out in reviewing the concerns brought to us by the residents of Ellis subdivision that this is a citywide problem. Tree roots clog sewers and most homeowners encounter this problem at some point. We have also learned that Urbana's reimbursement system is one used by most cities. Ideally, we would like a solution that does not cost more than our current sewer revenues. We also want to find the best way to help people who cannot afford the upfront costs and for whom a reimbursement is not practical. We're working on ways to improve public awareness of what financial help is available when reimbursement is not practical. So here are three proposed solutions that I've asked the staff to do. Immediately, I think we can order, in order to even out the reimbursements for street repairs so that one person who's further from the main pays no more than one closer, we could raise the current reimbursements from 50 percent of costs not to exceed $3,000. And that was an increase that was done a few years ago, thanks to Robert Lewis, who represents that ward. And we could raise it to 75 percent of costs not to exceed $4,500. This is affordable for what we have right now. And just to give you a comparison, Champaign currently pays $1,500, or in the case of a Brick Street, $2,500. The second thing is I think we need additional study. We're looking at what other cities do, and we would have to do cost studies for Urbana to see if the alternatives are affordable within our current sewer tax. We will present you with the alternatives and the costs for each so that you can see what the possibilities are, and we're certainly welcome to any suggestions from the public. If there is a better plan out there for Urbana residents, we will bring it up for discussion and public input.
Brandon?
One of the comments I wanted to add is that I know the mayor and the administration also looked into this idea of whether we could reimburse, rather than reimbursing the homeowner, could we, the city, directly pay the contractor so that the homeowner wouldn't have to have all that cash to pay the contractor first and then get a reimbursement? Unfortunately, so far, we haven't found a way that that's feasible. I wanted to let people know that we at least looked into it, and it's something that I know would make life simpler. There are complexities there with the issues of paying prevailing wage. And if the city is directly paying the contractor, then the costs would actually be higher than if the resident pays the contractor and the city reimburses. So I just wanted to let people know that was a great idea, a good suggestion. I know we had some back-and-forth discussion, I did, with staff about it and about looking into it, and so far, haven't figured out a way to make that feasible. But I really appreciate the mayor and the administration trying to take all these ideas that the council had thrown into the bucket and really figure out what could work and how we could make this a smoother process for residents.
Well, also, we're looking into whether the city could do it, but if we'd have to get new equipment or whatever. So that's what the cost things are that we're considering.
Charlie?
Yeah, it's my understanding that if the city were to do it, we'd have to buy lots of new equipment and really raise taxes and a bunch of other things to cover the costs. It's a completely different kind of equipment. I think people have forgotten that, you know, it's like a utility, it's like other utilities. If you contract with the water company, for example, you are responsible for your pipe from their water connection to your house, regardless of where it is. And the sewers like that, electrical, gas, and telephone, they make a little bit different deal. It's by utility. Their deal is, you know, they own the wire to the house or the pipe, the gas pipe to the, you know, the main outside there, you know, wherever that water meter, where the meter is, for example, for the gas. The cable company owns it, you know, to the house before it goes into the house, and you own everything inside the house. So it's basically, it's a utility, and you're responsible for your side of that utility. One of the things that I'd like to see us encourage people to do is, rather than dig up the street, there are new technologies that lets you go underground. Either sewer lining, you know, that plastic pipe which lets you get, you know, another 50 years or so out of your existing infrastructure, or to do the pipe bursting, which means, you know, you basically don't have to do it. So I would encourage us to also look at covering 3/4 of the costs of the portion when you have to go under the road. In the same way that we would pay for tearing up the road, that we should pick up 3/4 of the costs when you have to go underneath the road to the other side, using the same logic. You know, just to encourage people to do the underground thing because it's a lot cheaper for everybody.
Any other comments? Eric?
Yeah, I think the other thing we might look at is perhaps a variation on this, on the insurance that is sometimes offered by private providers. That is, it may be that we could offer at a zero, on a zero-revenue basis. That is, it statistically, you know, it's very hard to predict when an individual homeowner is going to run into a root problem. Averaged over the city, probably the total cost of that per year over the whole city to individual homeowners is probably fairly predictable. So it might make sense to consider at least a program where the, where people might pay an annual fee that I think that, based on insurance rates in other municipalities, might be a little over $100 a year. And this would ensure that the city could then, you know, completely take care of the problem when it arose for each individual homeowner. Obviously, you know, money has to come from somewhere, but it may be that we, it might be possible with an annual fee to insure people against having the sticker shock of having to pay several thousand dollars at one shot.
Robert?
Yeah, I think as we move forward, I think we also want to look at the other municipalities that have taken on this task of dealing with this issue. It's not unique to Urbana or Champaign. It's all over the country. And as you're aware, infrastructure deterioration is something that's a reality, and some cities have taken it upon themselves to address that issue. And I think Peoria, I believe, is one, and is it Peoria? Or Pekin, Illinois?
Pekin, Addison, and Schaumburg.
Schaumburg, yeah. So we can look at what they've done and how they approached it and see how they handle some of these issues as well. My view is that, based on the statistics that I've seen, the problem is solvable over time, and the number of events in a given year presents itself in a way that it should be economically feasible to handle. So I think that as we look at it over a longer period, we can project those costs and do a pretty good job of figuring out how to address the life safety issues associated with sewer issues.
Any other comments? I would just add, I believe we had, the staff was also working on a guide for property owners for what to do when they do have problems with the sewer. And one of the things that came out of this discussion was that sometimes you don't know that you're supposed to call the city first. And so we'll have a guide for property owners on how to deal with various sewer issues. So we'll see the ordinance increasing our reimbursement rate within the next couple of weeks. Mayor?
Yeah.
All right. Any other staff reports? All right. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the January 28 meeting?
So moved.
Second, you said there were some corrections that you saw, Diane?
Are there any? I have a couple of corrections. Does anyone else? Brandon?
Yeah, maybe the same correction. On page three of the minutes, under the discussion of the Legacy Tree Program, item six, in the middle of page three, I just wanted to clarify the motion a little. It says, "Mr. Bowersox Johnson made a motion to send this back for staff to come up with a revised Option Two advisory public input." And I guess I just wanted to add the clarification that the motion was intended to direct staff to bring back Option Two but remove the punitive fine.
That would be the required mitigation contribution.
Yeah.
Okay. That was one. There is another one in item five, paragraph three. It should read, "Kelly Murkowski, Grant Management Division Manager, gave information about grants available to low-income homeowners for sewer repairs." Okay.
And then, did you catch these? It says, "should" read, but I guess I just don't understand.
If there are no other corrections, did we get a motion in second?
Yeah. Robert?
All those in favor of the minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, those are approved. Next up is public input. I have three individuals who do not wish to speak but would like to be entered into the record. First is Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood of 1309 West Tremont Street, and her comment is in relation to the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. The second is Bishop King James Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street, regarding the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And the third is Joan P. Clark of 1207 West Tremont Street in Urbana, and it's related to the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issue. I have one person, two people who wish to speak. One is Carletta Donaldson.
It's Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookings Drive in Urbana. And just a brief announcement about WILL TV Radio's Community Cinema, the next film screening tomorrow evening, "The Power Broker: Whitney Young's Fight for Civil Rights," will be at 6:00 PM tomorrow evening at the Champaign Public Library. It's about civil rights leader Whitney Young Jr., who has no national holiday bearing his name. You won't find him in most history books. In fact, few people today know his name, much less his accomplishments. Immediately following the film, which lasts about an hour, there will be a panel discussion with the following panelists. Dr. Doris Houston, who's Associate Professor of Social Work at Illinois State University; Tracy Parsons, who's Access Initiative Project Director and former Director of the Urban League of Champaign County; and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, an NAACP life member, former officer to include First Vice President and Secretary of the NAACP; and one of eight responsible individuals from the community for the, excuse me, integration of the Urbana Public Schools in the '60s. There will also be a representative from the National Association of Social Workers, as well as other social workers in the audience. Now, there's no meeting next Monday, is that correct? The 18th?
There is.
Presidents?
No, we meet.
Oh, you do still meet?
It's not a city holiday.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, just in case people miss it, immediately after the city council meeting next week, it will be on television at 9:00 on WILL. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carol McCusick.
I wrote on the slip, the forming a committee to examine the commercial hauler bill that of 2011 that provides for commingled recycling for businesses. But first, I wanted to try to follow up on what I made a comment on for so many weeks in a row. Is there any movement on having a city council agenda item, which is a presentation on the municipal electric aggregation with the various aspects of the questions, like utility questions, the legal questions, and the administrative questions about the money from the fee and so on? Is there any movement on getting that scheduled in council?
Well, not to lose the rest of my time, I would, going to talk about commingled recycling. And I thought it was helpful that the Chair of Sustainability Advisory Committee asked in the SAC meeting, Sustainability Advisory Commission meeting last week, she asked the, Scott Tess, the Environmental Sustainability Manager, is there any, because he was reporting in his staff report that the residential, pick, the amount of material, I guess, picked up in the use cycle, residential was up 27 percent, and the multifamily was up 20 percent. That's what I remember, anyway. But some of those actions, but what she asked of him is, is do we have any measure of what amount of our waste stream is diverted to recycling? And I also heard a story on the radio from New York City, and they were talking about how much of their waste stream goes into recycling. And I think that's the wrong question because I don't think it's evaluating what kind of a toll is involved with going the recycling route. And it's, we're so far, like, committed to that, but the only reason that it really makes sense to fully challenge it, I think, is because of things you do over a long period of time. And, let's see, some of the aspects, okay, I was, the kinds of things I was arguing for, like, that there be, we'd evaluated on the basis of this reporting, right? That the better reporting, there'd be a way at the place they take it to. Well, it might blow away, it might be, but if they had this committee to examine it, questions like that could be looked into, like, just, you know, like, would, what further reporting is practical and what, you know, you could have people from the industry, right? What would be talking about, to that committee about it? But I have to say that I think I'm going to be, I would be so skeptical that about...
You have one minute, Ms. McCusick.
Anything that came out? I guess, well, just, because of, I think, even if I have foregone conclusions, I think the city has to examine this policy because it, I think the industry exists because of the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Last on public input is Carol Ammons.
I just want to bring a couple of things, just announcements to you, and a little bit of input because I don't have the information for one of the items on the agenda tonight. I've sent to all of you, I've gotten a couple of responses, but majority not, on an event, discussions that will be taking place in Urbana and Champaign, starting February 28 through March 2. These are hosted by Citizens with Conviction in conjunction with CU Citizens for Peace and Justice, who are, and we're the hosting organizations with a lot of other organizations in the community, around conversations with law enforcement against prohibition and efficacy now. Both organizations are east coast organizations that focus on drug reform policies that have really eaten away at the heart of our communities. The mission of LEAP is to reduce the multitude of harmful consequences resulting from the fighting of the war on drugs and to lessen the incidence of death, disease, crime, and addiction by ending prohibition. These discussions will be hosted in various locations in the community. One of them, of course, we're having the Criminal Justice Forum here in the chambers for criminal justice officials. We're also having an elected officials conversation, which I sent to you all, which is hosted at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, is a luncheon on February 28. That evening, we have community dialogue at Levitt's Faculty Center. That starts at 6:00 PM, 5:30, Aaron says 5:30. And then, on the next day, at Salem Baptist Church, there's a community conversation that will be hosted there at the same time at 5:30 for reception. Six starts the event. We would certainly encourage you to attend whichever that you choose, but because the conversation is a national issue, it definitely has local consequences, and we do local law enforcement around these issues. So I wanted to make sure that you all publicly knew that we were inviting you to come. And if you have not received an email from me, please shoot me a little note and say, hey, I didn't get that. Somehow, a couple of people got it, but a couple of people didn't.
Heather?
Actually, I got something that, but it was something about invite you to be linked, LinkedIn, are you using, is that assisted?
Oh, no, no, that...
But that's all I've gotten from you.
That was a technical Google mistake.
I think something's getting bumped out, and that got replaced. I don't know. Because I didn't receive that. I got something else, but not that.
I was re-sending emails to people just to remind them about it today, and I just haven't finished that. But I'll re-send emails with all the same information in it. So you'll get that again, at least by tomorrow. The other thing is, on the item 11 on here, the discussion item, I'm not sure what the reference of the dates are on there, but I would just encourage you to look at the process of deciding to allocate before you allocate. Because often, we support and continue to support the same programs without looking at new ones because it's easier, and sometimes it is easier. Or we don't have a method by which to measure whether the programs are even successful before we determine whether we'll give them additional funding. And I think funding is always a big deal, but I couldn't find any actual process to look at to determine whether we should or should not. And I think that's part, I hope, is part of the discussion before you allocate funds on this issue. And then finally, I'll just ask that, in considering options for Dr. Ellis subdivision, we definitely don't want to leave out the option of saying, looking at all the numbers, and what is it that would clear this up across the whole city of Urbana, as opposed to just focusing on this one issue of Dr. Ellis?
You have one minute, Ms. Ammons.
Thank you so much. So we want to make sure that at least, when we're looking at the options, we're not just looking at the two or three that's on the table from the council side, but looking at the options that's also there from the public's view. Thank you.
Thank you. I think you came in a little late, after the Dr. Ellis subdivision issues.
No, I heard it.
Oh, you did? Okay. All right. Okay. Any other public? Brandon?
One quick announcement that I could do during public input here. Everybody knows a lot probably about the UC2B project, and you've heard me talk about it for years, but I just had a little quick piece of it that's a public announcement. Because the timeline on the grant was extended, there still is a chance for people in all of those grant-eligible neighborhoods, including Dennis, I think your ward and Robert Lewis, your ward has pieces of that grant-eligible area. And sign-up is now extended in both of those neighborhoods until March 1. So people have sort of an extra window here. I know last year, when we were going door-to-door, it was kind of, you sign up now or we're running out of time, but because the clock has been extended on the funds from the federal agency, we now have until March 1, and people have another chance to sign up, to ask questions or get info. And if people sign up by March 1, then there will actually be another round of construction this summer in the June to September range, when they would get plugged in. So folks in both of your neighborhoods would have a chance to get plugged in this summer if they sign up by March 1. So that's only three weeks away. I wanted to make people aware, and I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Eric?
The only comment I would make is that people I know who have tied into the system and are now on it are very, very happy.
Yeah. Thank you, definitely.
I'm streaming, I'm good.
Thanks.
Any other announcements? Okay. We'll move on to items, I think I'd like to take five and six in omnibus fashion. Is there a motion to consider those?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Ben.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. These are both Resolution Number 2013-02-003R and 2013-02-004R, and they are related to approving the local agency agreement for participation in the IDOT Safe Routes to School grant for signage, bike racks, and pavement markings. And Bill Gray, did you have a report on this?
Yes, there's a memo in the packet prepared by Brad, but basically, IDOT is wanting us to break up this into two separate distinct agreements, if you will. One is for the pavement markings in the amount of $86,630, that's the estimate for the pavement marking work. The second is for day labor for signage and bike rack installation, which would be public works crews doing that work. That'd be $85,170. So it's two agreements with IDOT to spend those dollars.
Any questions for Bill? Dennis?
Not so much a question, Bill, but we got the layout, which is called here Addendum One, which shows all the proposed Safe Routes to Schools plan and also the master plan for the citywide bicycle network. And this might be a really useful plan to send to the residents on kinch because this topic has come up several times now in the Traffic Commission. And I think people don't have a grasp, who live along that proposed bike route, of the extent that the city's gone to, to plan that process. And I think it would really help the residents before we make the decision to have that material at hand. So I don't know if you could distribute that or not, but I hope you could.
Any other questions? Bill, I had a question from a resident who wanted to know specifically if this grant was going to be funding pavement markings near Yankee Ridge School. And I can't tell from the map that was included in the packet.
How about if I get you an answer on that? I don't think so, but I will check to be sure on the pavement markings at Yankee Ridge School for this grant. I'm not sure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Bill? Okay, well then, can I have a motion to send Resolutions Number 2013-02-003R and 2013-02-004R to council with a recommendation for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Jacobson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Next is ordinance number 2013-02-011, and it's an ordinance approving an agreement for use of the right-of-way with the Champaign Telephone Company. And there are several sections, Green Street between Gregory and Lincoln, California Avenue between Vine Street and Urbana Avenue, Philo Road between Florida Avenue and Colorado, Elm Street between Race Street and Cedar Street, Cedar Street between Springfield and Elm, and Willow Road between the right-of-way north of Airport Road and Beeson Drive. Bill?
Now that the Phase One of UC2B construction project is largely completed and being lit up as we speak, companies or opportunities are there to start delivering service to various businesses, Champaign Telephone Company being one of them. They've approached us, and it became clear early on that to serve their customers, they would be wanting to occupy our right-aways. So this is kind of a catch-all license agreement for known projects they have in the works, and they're seeking approval. And this is very similar to other license agreements we've approved in the past with various folks like Carl or whomever. So try to answer any questions. Legal and public work staff worked to put this together. Legal and public work staff worked to put this together.
Dennis?
Yeah. So Bill, does this in any way compete with or conflict with the plans for the eventual build-out of rings in additional areas beyond the UC2B immediate service area? Because, I mean, in the future, we're going to be wanting to put city-owned lines through the same area. And so if existing lines are already are in place, I don't imagine that there'll be that many requests to use the new lines. So, I mean, if we get, this might be like maybe the first, but if it takes five years, 10 years to place the extended rings out and we find that private companies are continually asking for the right-of-way use, will we, are we really working against ourselves in the long run or it's just a matter of the fact is that people need services immediately?
I have that same question. And in this instance, Champagne Telephone Company does have an indefensible RISA use agreement with UC2B. It's my understanding at some point in the future, their facilities would become UC2B's facilities. So assuming that is going to be the case, then these facilities being installed would be part and parcel to serving other customers presumably. Okay. But that's the extent of my knowledge as to hopefully not duplicating and having multiple conduits in an area.
Charlie?
We have somebody here from Champagne Telephone. I don't know if Glenn wants to speak to this a little more or not.
Glenn Berman, Champagne Telephone Company, and the areas that will be occupied by the right-of-way with laterals, it's the intention that those cables would be turned over to the ownership of UC2B and become part of the UC2B rings. And the only ownership that Champagne Telephone would retain is those portions off of the right-of-way going from a lateral to an entrance at a particular location. So I don't see that anything that we're going to do would conflict, it actually would enhance and help because then that would be laterals that the city doesn't need to construct because UC2B already owns it.
Brandon?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I agree. I support this wholeheartedly. I think this kind of extension of using the UC2B backbone to reach more places was sort of envisioned since the start and Champagne Telephone was one of the private partners that helped to fund the, you know, the grant being possible by providing match dollars. So this in no way duplicates the rings that are out there that reach around the whole community, but this instead says, okay, from this particular corner, we want to plug in a few more buildings to make this network really useful for folks. And indeed, some of the stuff that's being built will then be dedicated back to UC2B so that any other UC2B customers that might want to be along this segment could use the cable as well. So I think it's totally mutually supportive and part of the way this thing grows.
Charlie, and then Eric?
Yeah, I was just going to say the UC2B language itself, the creation of it encouraged and defined how this goes about doing this, and they're just simply following those procedures that are laid out there.
Eric?
Are the terms already specified by which this transfer of ownership would take place?
Yeah, so that happens in a different transaction rate. This just allows the private company to build in the right-of-way. And that's the part that really matters for the city of Urbana here to get straight. But the time at which any private company would actually connect up and plug into UC2B in order to be able to open the lid on the manhole and go down there and plug in the wires, that's when they would also have to have an agreement with UC2B to use certain strands of fiber. And it's part of those agreements that aren't, you know, that aren't in this packet, but part of those agreements that really bind any of the private companies to the terms. And part of those terms are that the cables you put in the ground can be shared by other customers as well. So that transaction happens with UC2B directly when the time to plug it in comes.
Robert?
And those go along with the federal guidelines relative to the fact that the federal government owns the, essentially owns the network, okay? So they have to be in compliance. So it's not an issue.
Okay. Is there a motion to send ordinance number 2013-02-011 to council with a recommendation for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Charlie. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes.
Diane?
Charlie?
I need to recuse myself from the next three items that are related to liquor license stuff because of my membership at the Food Co-op.
And me too. So just for any conflict of interest or even appearance of it, I'll abstain as well as Charlie.
So Brandon Bowersox and Charlie Smythe are recusing themselves from voting on the next three issues, which are liquor licenses. First up is ordinance number 2013-02-012, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 3-43, increasing number of Class C liquor licenses for Casey's Retail Company, DBA Casey's General Store, 2100 East University Avenue. Mayor?
I would like to say that all three of these applicants have passed the background checks. So we would recommend approval.
I would send ordinance number 2013, move to send ordinance number 2013-02-012 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It was moved by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Eric Jacobson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Next up is ordinance number 2013-02-013, ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class A liquor licenses for Cochran's Office Incorporated, DBA Tin Roof Tavern, 604 North Cunningham Avenue.
I move that we send this to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Heather Stevenson, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Last is ordinance number 2013-02-014, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 3-43, increasing the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for Mass Amigos Incorporated, DBA Mass Amigos Restaurant, 1106 West University Avenue.
I'll make the motion that we approve.
Second.
Moved by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Heather Stevenson. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes. And last item on the agenda is discussion of social service funding allocations. And those dates, by the way, listed on the agenda are the dates of the committee meetings where we've discussed this in the past, in case anyone was wondering. Mayor?
Yeah, I assume that you pass this out, this one here? Okay.
Well, no, Charlie did, actually.
Okay. This is just kind of a overview and a suggestion of how to proceed. We committed $313,400 this year to social service agencies. And this is to the News Gazette. This included $204,400, I wrote it wrong, from the city's general fund and $100,000 from Cunningham Township and $9,000 in CDBG funding. And the attached chart shows that we funded 22 agencies, which serve people from many communities and three which serve only Urbana. We've held initial discussions with Champagne staff about possibly coordinating spending on agencies which serve both cities. Several years ago, Champagne stopped funding many individual agencies and tried a more intense local area approach, but I think their total funding went down. So we've talked with them about a list of what they currently fund and we hope we can find a way that they can help some of the agencies we now support. Because there's no way that even if we say how many are Urbana people, if we're the only ones putting the city money in, it just doesn't work out. So we end up paying a lot more than Champagne. I would like to see Champagne just decide what they would like to give money to, if they'd like to give money. And if they want to generate private funds in addition to city funds in order to match us, I'd hope that they would fund in proportion to their population. Usually when we make arrangements with Champagne, since they're twice as big as we are, they pay twice as much as we do. But even if it was one to five to one, or even one to one, I think it would be a step in the right direction. They have a summer youth employment program, which I think we could learn from, and I'd like to set up something similar in Urbana. And I notice, I mean, this is something that we've talked about before, so I'm just summing up what we've talked about. In addition, I hope we can make some progress toward helping the 150 to 200 mostly low-income children in Urbana who are eligible for early childhood education but who are now on a waiting list, either for the school district programs or for Head Start. And helping all these children is beyond the financial ability of the city alone, and I think we need to define some specific ways we can help and then get a program to get support from other entities in Urbana. And there are numbers of studies that show that investment in very young children is the best way to create a better community for everyone. This country and this city have a poverty program that needs to be addressed. The University of Illinois Chancellor Phyllis Wise has sponsored an ongoing meeting of community members to improve the quality of life in Champagne County. At the last meeting, the participants approved working together to find some way to help the children who need preschool education but who are on the waiting list. I think the best way for Urbana to direct existing funding to any new purpose would be to seek help from Champagne to fund the existing agencies which serve both communities. And I have three suggestions for your consideration, just to start the budget process for next year. First, that we keep the total funding at current levels and seek assistance from Champagne for agencies that serve both cities. Second, that we do not ask new agencies to apply for funding next year, but instead ask existing agencies if they need to revise their request. We spent a lot of time last year interviewing people, but we didn't have the funding, so it didn't seem like it was the right approach. So I think we, since we're not looking to have a lot more money next year, we're very uncertain about what funding we're going to have, and I'd like to keep it at least the same, which we've done throughout the recession. Third, I think we should adopt a method for evaluating performance based on existing best practices. And I see that this document that was handed out, and I also talked with Carol Ammons today, she's interested in that. I think there are models out there that we could use. And finally, I'd like to explore to, ways to implement a summer youth employment program.
Heather?
On number two, it says we do not ask new agencies to apply for funding next year, but instead ask existing agencies if they need to revise their request. Why don't we say, instead of if they need to, because I can't see that a lot are going to say, oh yeah, we need to revise ours, but instead to say of ways they could revise their request.
Sure. I mean, this is, I'm just offering this as a discussion rather than a formal.
I know, I'm just saying that maybe the wording there could be to ask existing agencies of ways they could revise their requests.
Okay, that's fine.
Because I just don't see a lot of agencies saying, oh yeah, we can, we can do that. Not.
They might have a change in the mix that they're asking for.
Yeah.
But you're right. I mean, I think that's fine. I'm happy to do that.
Eric?
Yeah, I, maybe, maybe instead of revising the request, it should be to update their request. They've had another year of experience, they've, if they haven't, if they haven't learned something, I mean, they should have learned something in the year, no matter how well they're doing. And there should be some updating. Just, it may be a reaffirmation of their mission. It may be things that they've learned that suggest that they ought to change their emphases a little bit, but I think that they ought to, they ought to update their requests.
Dennis?
I would really support more work on summer youth employment programs. It is, there are so many young people who really could benefit from having part-time or summertime employment in our community. Well, heck, there are a lot of adults who could use the opportunity to have employment in our community. And, you know, it might be that we could talk to, you know, businesses who would be willing to, you know, extend their summer employment programs, you know, to Grounds Cruise and, you know, you know, maybe, maybe the gas distributor companies could decide to hire young people at the pumps, which, you know, used to be a common sight, you know, in decades ago. You went to a gas station and there were two or three guys that would come up and pump your gas for you and do your service checks of your car. And that always employed a lot of young people in the summertime and it was a wonderful opportunity. I wonder if there, I mean, there might be, it might be useful to think about and brainstorm about how we can recreate some of the jobs which were used to be available and could be available if it was economically feasible through perhaps some kind of federal funding program or subsidy or something like that. And the other thing is work training. And, you know, I just went out to a program this weekend at Parkland College. They have a brand-new automobile repair facility that just opened up fairly recently. Incredible facility. It was possible to get, you know, any kind of youth training in the mechanical arts in this community or partnering with, you know, in the county or with Champagne. It would be a great opportunity and I really would love to see that evolve.
Eric?
This, all discussions like this ultimately wind up kind of heartbreaking because every need you meet means another need that you're not going to meet. The, the one that leaps out at me, and it's just been mentioned, it's already been mentioned quite a bit, but that leaps out at me strategically to focus on is early childhood education and childcare. And the reason that this is so, seems to me to be such an important area to focus on is not only is it, you know, transformative for those families, but if we stand out as a community where affordable early education and childcare are available, I mean, just now to, now switch off my bleeding heart and put on my hard head, what a tremendous competitive advantage in attracting families to live here. So I, I think that, I think that that's one that we should really look at very, very hard. And it's not to say that any of the others, youth employment or any of the others are not worthy, but this is one that could really be transformative for the community, I think.
Charlie?
So Diane and I were talking about this earlier today and I was looking at her, you know, her evaluation sheets she put together for 2012 and then 2013. I sort of consolidated them together, started thinking, you know, do we do a scoring system and whatever? And so I've put in some ideas here of how evaluation would work. But the more important thing, I think, is the second page, where Diane and I, I think I've got all of Diane's questions in here summarized since she's chairing. I tried to, speaking for both of us, and she can correct me when I'm wrong. What are the questions we're looking at? And I think, and the mayor sort of alludes to this too, we have a set of core programs that we've been funding year after year after year. We should identify those, commit a certain amount of money to those core programs after evaluating them in some appropriate fashion, to make sure they are being effective. That's mentioned both in what I have on the first page and what's been mentioned by the mayor. And then we should look to any, any places where we've got duplicative services, we should be looking for consolidation. You know, we should be looking to streamline those operations and if we can identify some leftover money, we can use them for our other things. I think everybody agrees that the pre-K programs are very high priority items, other youth programs like the after-school, summer jobs. It's not just, you know, summer jobs, yeah, but then we have a whole group of kids in between who have nothing to do in the summer, you know, summer camp programs, that sort of thing. Anything we can do, there's a whole spectrum there of age, all related to youth, that would be nice to identify. And I think to do that, we've alluded to partnerships with various agencies and other groups. We have the Champagne Summer Program. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to, you know, can we commit X number of dollars? We don't need to reinvent the wheel, we just need to, you know, can we commit X number of dollars, X number of businesses from Urbana that are interested and, and, and just have a combined program. Likewise, you know, what can we do with the early childhood program that already exists here? Can we provide some scholarships like we do for the Park District programs? You know, we occasionally provide scholarships for kids to go to, to, to summer camp. You know, can we provide some scholarships to get more kids into various early childhood programs? And then, the same way, you know, are there programs that we can partner with United Way, for example, that work in Urbana to supplement what they do so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel? You know, we want to make the most use of our money. And then, any new monies that we can identify, we can, we can, we can, those are the monies that we can put out saying, you know, we want a program that does X, Y, and Z, X, Y, or Z. And those are the things that, that we have this much money to, to, to put in and see what, see what comes up. We did that with the, with the, I forget the name of the center over here.
Neighborhood Connections?
Neighborhood, yes, the Neighborhood Programs that we, we did last summer and, and previously, that sort of thing. So that's, that's where I'm going, and I'm off, I've represented you, pull it off there, Diane.
Yeah, I think Kelly had some comments, grants management.
Yes, I actually have a couple of things. One, I have a schedule, because that's, that's part of, we want to find out if this schedule still works, what kind of, you know, are we looking at RFP, limited application? So I, I'll pass this and have you look at that. And then, the, the other thing is, goes with, with what Charlie said, in that we are involved in what we call a local funders group, which is made of the United Way, Community Foundation of East Central Illinois, City of Champaign, us, the Champaign County Mental Health Board, and the Disabilities Board. And we actually just on, last week, on the 6th, we had a visioning workshop looking at where, where all of us are heading, looking at collaborating. We had a list of agencies that we went through and looked at, all of the ones that we fund through the different, and so, so we have a little bit of homework that we have to go through, all of the agencies that we fund, kind of put them in a, in a list of like the shelters, whatever it seems like our priorities are. And then Joan Dixon with the Community Foundation is actually going to put them all together into a work plan, putting all the information, and then it will, then we'll have that to give to all of, all of you to look at, and to the other boards and things. So, so I wanted to let you know that there are others that, other funders that are looking at this similar as well as far as collaborating and looking at. The Community Foundation talked about expanding their priorities maybe into homelessness or, or other areas. They already collaborate with United Way on what they call a cradle to career. So, so there's definitely other funders, the United Way, Community Foundation, that as well would, would work with us, so.
Robert?
I was, I'm glad to see that we're doing this, to be honest with you, and I think it's a step in the right direction. And the other thing that I thought about early on was, I appreciate the fact that people are trying to collaborate, but that would be significant in terms of how we view their funding as well. And I think that if they have a concerted effort to join forces to try and solve a problem, one that I think that's out there that's really impacting our community significantly is the, is, is mental health. And the fact that it's putting an additional burden on not only the Urbana police force, but the Champaign police force with regard to dedicating people to those, add an additional service for them, they're becoming what they're not supposed to be doing. I think if they have a collaboration with other agencies, then maybe they get special points or something like that to allow them to move, get a percentage of whatever, so, as we look at this.
Charlie, and then Dennis.
Okay, well, I was gonna, Kelly gives you the perfect segue into this, is, is, I was going to ask if, if we wanted to have a council study session on this topic. Next Monday's council meeting looks to be very light. We should be able to get the business part of it done in 15 minutes unless there's something coming directly from somewhere else. So I was going to suggest that, you know, once we finish the council meeting, that we spend an hour or two, I don't want to be here past nine o'clock, literally, you know, going through all of these different pieces and seeing if we can come up with something so that we can, you know, so that we can have something by the 27th. I think a lot of it would depend on, on Kelly and what, what she can put together and, and, you know, some additional brainstorming and actually lay out, you know, we have this much money, you know, these are the core programs and how we, how we move forward. But I'd really like to get this, get a big chunk of this done, if possible, next week.
Pin it down.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. That's why we started it tonight, rather than having an early session, which we've done before, because we'd had a light agenda, so we can do it next week.
Heather, and then Dennis.
Mayor and Phyllis, my, I would suggest that maybe we invite the people that are running for our seats to the meeting next week, and also to the May 22nd, the special meeting where we get boxed lunches. It's just a suggestion.
We did invite them.
Okay.
I mean, they're invited tonight, and we sent them the materials.
Okay, great.
Dennis?
This is probably larger than the immediate scope of considering the consolidated social service funding for next year, but in that, we're beginning to look, have a larger overview of how to combine and consolidate services. I would, my vision for the future would also include something else. And that would be to bring the consolidated service providers together in a location specific, some, some yet-to-be-determined specific location in the southeast part of Urbana, where their services would be at the location of some of our more currently heavy request sites. And then maybe create a vision for the future of them consolidating and providing, you know, a building where they collaborate to provide services that's right in the community itself, rather than scattered throughout the community in various locations. To have a central service location that perhaps is dual-supported by seven to 10 different constituents who provide the services, and where it would be a focal point for people to arrive, to receive services and assistance, would be, I think, a huge benefit and a really interesting direction for the community and the city if they could help formulate that.
Brandon?
I had a couple quick questions and comment. First, the application that will go out three weeks from today, which I know that's not long to pull together, are we envisioning that the application itself will change because of the criteria?
Yes.
So, I mean, we really better give our final input to Kelly and the staff next week on that. If they're going to revise a whole packet in an application form, okay. So we better, we better be thinking about that and be prepared to give any final input, because time is really running out to change that. Mayor, do you have a?
Yeah, I was going to say that I think that we don't need to do the first step here about the display ad and ask for applications, because I think we should communicate with the, well, we should decide who we want to communicate with, and not overwhelm ourselves by asking for all kinds of new things, since we don't have enough money to fund what we're already doing.
That's true. I agree with point two on the mayor's letter, that only existing agencies getting funding would, would reapply for next year, but it, but that I agree. We don't, for next year at least, I don't think it makes sense to ask new agencies to apply. So then, my next question is, would we also next week be talking about working on the scoring sheet and on solidifying our criteria? Okay.
Yeah, we're going to pin it down.
Okay.
Yep.
And, okay, my final comment. I support all these, all these concepts, all four points in the mayor's letter I agree with, and a lot of the points on the, the handout that Charlie gave, the idea of the scoring sheet, I like what I see. The one aspect of it that I am afraid will be harder to implement is the part about asking duplicative services to consolidate. And I guess I just want to briefly kind of play devil's advocate on that one idea. Everything else here, I think, makes a whole lot of sense to me. But that idea of asking them to consolidate, I think in reality, will turn out at times to be very difficult. I think about agencies like, our money for food goes to the Eastern Illinois Food Bank and to Meals on Wheels. And those are two, you, you might say, well, the Food Bank and Meals on Wheels, they both do the same thing. They both need, feed families that don't have food. But they are both doing such different parts of the overall ecosystem of how you get food to families in need. They're, yeah, okay. It, it would just be hard to ask either agency, they're both well-established agencies, they've been around for a long time and do a great job, to ask them to.
They're filling different niches.
Yeah, filling different niches. Another one is the, even in the area of homeless shelters, we have the Time Center, which I believe the mental health center of Champaign County is still overseas. They have a new name now. And we have Community Elements now, is the name. And we have a shelter at Salvation Army, and we have a shelter at, you know, the, the new United Way Family Shelter. And all of these are needs, and I support the United Way's new family shelter concept. That's been a huge need for a long time, that's finally filled. But I think just because of who, what agencies are out there in our community, to somehow ask them all to work together on homeless shelters, so that we could just give one bucket of money to one agency, it, in reality, would be very hard to make them collaborate. And I'm fine with the idea of us funding Time Center for what they do, and funding the new family shelter for what they do, because it's such a different population. So, anyway, that's the one part of this that I feel will be very hard when it comes to the rubber hitting the road, hard for us to demand, and hard for agencies to form alliances or to join forces. But everything else here, I think, is moving in the right direction. I think we have our work cut out for us, if we're going to get staff, all the input they'll need to do a new application form and scoring sheet next week. But I think this is the right track, and I'm excited we're proceeding.
Dennis, and then Eric?
And the other difficult part, I think, is going to be, I guess, scoring or evaluating their efficiency. You know, we're relying on their statistics about perhaps how many people are being served directly. You know, but then there's maybe different qualities of results. And we don't really attend a lot of the events ourselves, and so it's pretty hard to determine who's really being effective and who perhaps, you know, needs, well, maybe are not as effective in the allocations that we are providing. We're going to be considering certain ratios or points of data that have to do with efficacy for, for Urbana. And I'd like to have a kind of a, I trust that, that points are outlined for making that judgment that aren't at least, you know, very subjective.
Eric?
Well, I, I think I agree with Brandon about the duplication. I mean, and, and obviously, no person stays in two homeless shelters in the same night. So there's, but, and I, and I guess, I guess some of these issues that we're, you know, concerned about, for example, the, the, I mean, we can ask the agencies to, in, in their updating of their requests, one, one item in the updating can be, to what extent are you filling a unique niche? And to what extent do you have collaborative relationships or synergistic relationships with other agencies? How do you complement the work of other agencies, and how are you unique? So I think we can ask that question. And then the second question is, you know, what is the best evidence that you can give us for how effective you have been in the past year? And I think that we would, I, I, I'm not, I think we just kind of have to rely on our own sensitivities about, you know, how well they answer that question, as well as, you know, what we sort of know from, from what we learn about the experiences of the people they help and people who interact with the agencies. So I don't know how to, I think there's a point past where we can't exactly formalize a score, but we can definitely explicitly ask the agencies to address the issues that we're concerned about in, in the, in the request for proposals.
Mayor?
I think United Way has a pretty well-thought-out system. So we should look at how these agencies are evaluated by other agencies. Is there anybody besides United Way that does rankings or?
I think the, the Mental Health Board does as well, and I think that they sent us some information like regarding.
Okay, so everybody should get that for Monday, so we can look and see, because we don't have to start from zero.
Right.
Okay, so next week, we will discuss any changes in the application. We'll identify our priorities, we'll focus on our core programs, we'll come up with suggestions for the scoring sheet, and we will do all that in one hour.
And we'll adjourn?
Oh, two hours, okay.
Will, yeah, adjourn?
Okay. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned.